Six o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and start. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 16th. Sherri, can we get a roll call?
Chair Trent.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Chesley.
Here.
One vacancy.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. All right. Jonathan, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect, thank you. All right. So we have public communications, this is the time set aside for anything that's not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, is there anybody online, Sherri?
No, there's not.
All right, perfect, we'll move on. Next, we've got disclosure of site visits, ex parte contacts. I visited the site and I met with one of the builders, I believe his name was Mike. Yeah, met with Mike, and he showed me around. And that's it.
Which item was it for?
What's that?
Which item was it for?
Oh, I apologize, this was for item number one. Oh wait, yeah, item number one.
There's nowhere to go on two.
Yeah, there's nowhere to go on two. Yeah. Anybody else, ex parte contacts, site visits?
The same thing, I've visited the site and had a tour.
Perfect. Anyone else?
I visited the site and met with the applicant. No ex parte contacts or site visits.
All right, cool. I don't see approval of meeting minutes on here, is that...
No minutes for this, for this meeting.
Oh, you mean for the prior meeting?
No minutes to act on.
No minutes to act on, okay, perfect, okay, okay, cool, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the public hearing item then, for the review of the phasing plan progress and the consideration of an adjustment. And who's gonna lead the way on this one?
So I'll open it up and then, I see Jeff, the applicant, is here to talk about the phasing plan as well. But I'll, I'll kind of set the table, and then I've got a site plan kind of showing the, the different phases that have, have been outlined and a part of the approvals from 2008, 2009, and then reinvigorated for the settlement agreement as well, so.
Okay.
Let me just pull up the simple site plan here. All right. So, good evening, Commissioner, my name is Lucas Cyberd, I'm the Community Development Director here for the city of Ojai, the item we have for you tonight is a public hearing item for Planning Commission review and consideration regarding DRP 0501, and it's a review of an approved phasing plan progress and consideration of an adjustment to the cottages among the flowers, located at 312 West Aliso Street, and it is in regards to a 10-unit, now 12-unit phasing plan, which is a part of a settlement agreement for the bungalows, which added two affordable housing units, which ended up being ADUs. Those units are both low and very low from an affordable housing rate, deed restricted, 55 years. The phasing plan itself, if you're looking at the site plan in front of you here, there's yellow, green, blue, and red. The yellow signifies Phase 1, and that's two units. Two main units, and then a four-car garage, four-car garage, right, five-car garage. And that also includes two ADUs on top. That is nearing completion, and as a part of one of the conditions of approval as a part of this project, and just, just to kind of help set the table here, this is a project that has been ongoing for a number of years. There was a settlement agreement that brought this project forward, as well as four other ones. We're focusing on really the phasing plan for tonight, in terms of consideration. Initially, with this project, it was 10 units, the settlement agreement brought on two additional affordable units, which are a part of the Phase 1. Those are waiting for final approval or certificates, CFO, for them to be occupied. Before they move on to Phase 2, which is the green outline, which includes kind of the central core area for renovation, that the applicant brought forward a request to also consider doing Phase 4, which is the red area that you see here. And kind of, not necessarily putting the cart before the horse, but really kind of doing ground-up construction in, in the case of what we're talking about here, but more importantly, there's a condition of approval that requires, and it was made as a part of the Planning Commission's wisdom in 2008, for, before it goes forward to Phase 4, that it come before this body, now obviously, I don't think anybody was here in 2008 when this came forward, but you are here now, tonight, acting and, and representing the Planning Commission and providing an opportunity for discussion and determination. So that's really what we're here to talk about, it's two different options here. The first option is just moving forward with Phase 2, and, and just moving forward to 2 to 3 to 4. There's a request to also skip 2 and 3 and move to 4 for ground-up construction for the two, two new units, and that's in the red highlighted area that you can see here. And I should preface it with, it's two units side by side, and really what it is, is it's gonna be the two Samara units that were a part of the, that are gonna be part of the Mallory Way project, which is just above it. So that's kind of what you're seeing here, they're wanting to cite those two Samara units. Either do it in coordination with the three units in terms of renovations for those, or restoration of those, or do 4 and then come back and do 2 and then 3. One of the reasons, and I'll have Jeff come up and kind of speak to, to the request and where it came from, is there are tenants currently living in 2 and, in Phase 2 and 3. Obviously, nobody's living in 4, because it's ground-up construction. So there are tenants in 2 and 3, and the thought is, is to, to skip to 4, let those tenants remain in place, get those units up and active. As a part of the settlement agreement, it gives options for those tenants to either, to do a number of things, so it gives additional options out there. So with that, let's pause for any questions that the commission may have, and then I'd also invite Jeff to kind of fill in the blanks here for, for this phasing as well.
I have just a quick question, how does this, I'm, just the map is a little confusing, I'm trying to figure out how this fits in with the current construction that's going on in the cottages.
Right there is current, up here is Phase 4.
Yeah, so yellow.
This is current.
The yellow area that's highlighted there on the left.
Uh huh.
That's current.
Okay.
That's what's currently going on in the front, and it's really in the front. Aliso's to your left, it would be to the south.
Gotcha.
The north arrow is on the very bottom there, you can see.
Yeah. Okay.
I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it's for you or for Jeff, but as long as you're both there, may I proceed. On page 1 of the administrative report, the last sentence says the adjustment to the phasing plan would allow for the prefabricated Samara units slated for Phase 4 to be installed in a smaller scale, and I'm wondering what the smaller scale, what we're talking about there.
Yes, that, that's one of the motivations, is that the prior-approved duplex structure that's in the, the red highlighted area, we propose to replace that with two of the Samara units with, I think they're about 600 square feet each versus this, which is, each side was about 1,700 square feet. They're much smaller.
Okay.
And one of our other motivations, really related to using the Samara units and then the future units at Mallory, is that we want to, one, sort of do these as a test case to bring them in, because these have to be craned in, which is, you know, no small feed at this site because of trees and access, all that good stuff. But they also have kind of an interesting foundation plan, it's a pinning plan, so it's, imagine massive stakes versus like your typical skirt foundation. And so, we've spent a lot of time working with their engineering firm, which is out of Washington State, and would like to try to use this pinning system and kind of test-case it to see if it'll work with our soil.
What is the advantage of the pinning system?
A lot less construction noise, so you're basically, you know, you're not trenching, you're leveling, and then you're using a pinning system, and it's a whole different maze of different metal pinning that's tied together.
Does it, is it open, would it allow air or water to move?
Underneath it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, it would, yeah, it's elevated a couple feet.
And that, then do you have to skirt the...
Yes, definitely, for animals and other goodies.
Criggers.
The pinning system is basically gonna serve as like a foundation, so to speak.
Yeah, it's an, it's a, it's a, it's an anchoring foundation system.
Right.
But not, not something that's typically been used here.
Right.
They've used it in California, it's been permitted, that was one of our concerns, but we haven't seen it here locally.
Yeah, and the advantages to that is, is what, it just makes the foundation more secure, like versus being on blocks?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, definitely, and the installation is a little different, you know, you're, you're driving it in with pneumatic versus trenching and forming.
Right, instead of doing like concrete.
I think the, the...
Is it a helical pile?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Is it like a helical pile?
Um...
Like screw it in?
One more question about Phase 4, in the administrative report, page 3 of 4, the Phase 4 section. The first item says, "Construction of proposed secondary driveway to Aliso Street." I'm, I'm not clear where that driveway is supposed to be.
So you have a...
Oh, yeah, I remember.
This point here, so Aliso's here on the far left.
Right.
And you see the red sort of outline there, that's, that is a secondary fire lane.
Yep. So there's a...
You mean at the to, at the top?
At the top, correct. It would be to the...
It's a fire lane, not a, not an access for residents.
Yeah, so there's a couple different access points for this, this project. First, on the very bottom, which would be the east side, there is an access point along Aliso.
Right.
That gives you access to the garage and those two units. A secondary access, which is also considered a primary, is off of, is that Oak?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Which is also on the bottom.
Yep.
And then you have the, the red access point, which is really all dirt right now. And that's in the red, and that's at the very top.
Yeah.
And, and that would not be really open to the public?
Is the idea for that to be open to the public, or is that, no, I thought that was for emergency purposes.
For residents. That's for residents that live there.
Resident...
Residents that live there, not emergency.
So they would access it, I can kind of...
Probably Oak.
Yeah, right there.
Here, at this opening here.
Right.
And you're through to here, and you see the parking here. This map here shows the original duplex that was approved.
Right.
This is the Samara.
Okay.
Right. I don't have the Samara layout, it's much, the footprint is much smaller. So...
Okay, so that drive, that red opening on Aliso at the top is open for residents? It'll be a secondary drive?
It's really a fire lane.
So, does that mean it's not open?
It's not open.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be a gate?
Got an answer.
Will there be a gate blocking it, that...
Probably, yeah, the fire department will probably require that with a, with a lock system, you know, their, their lock catch system.
Their primary access is off of Oak, I mean, all the improvements that you're seeing there are off of Oak on that east side.
Is that Oak open yet? Are you, are you using Oak as an access point?
Yeah, Oak is open at present.
Right.
Yeah, one, one of the other, one of the other reasons that we submitted the application is we have utility installs, and the phasing plan, which...
Jeff, can you, can you move that so they can, yeah?
The phasing plan that was done in 2008 or 09, that was long before our time, before we were involved, but you have utility issues, and the main thing right now, we're sort of in the middle of, is with Edison, we're bringing all-new Edison underground, everything right now is above ground. And it also includes the neighbors, by the way, the, you know, it's kind of a, a little bit of a can of worms. But we have the new utility feeds, and we back-fed to the neighbors underground, and we'd like to get that in Phase 2.
It actually runs behind this building, goes this direction, this is Phase 2.
Right.
But we've gotta extend that all the way across here, across the new tunnel system for the storm channel that we've already put in.
Right.
Right.
And so that underground electric feed will go over that to feed the two units.
So, my biggest concern is trying to get all that underground work done, so we're done. You know, the major part of it. Phase 3 will actually be fed off of Oak, the Oak side with Edison. So, but this section is fed really off the first phase and, and the second phase.
Is that really the, the underpinning of why you're asking to move up Phase 4, or is there any other considerations as to why you want to...
No, the ma, the main high points are really utilities, to get those done as part of, you know, doing Phase 2, so we're, Phase 2 and Phase 4 are done, and then trying out the, the pinning system for the Samara units, which, you know, two of these, you know, we want to try to get that down, that whole system, because we're gonna put in 30.
Yeah, a lot more of them.
We're gonna put in a whole bunch of them over, you know, up, up north, over the next couple of years, and we'd like to really get that figured out before we tackle Mallory, which is gonna be a much mo, you know, it's a monstrous thing.
Is the Samara, are the Samara units that you plan to put in here, the one-bedroom units that we saw in Westwood?
Yeah, Westlake, yeah, they're, they're both one-bedroom units, you, you saw kind of their first concept, they're a little, a little bit more improved from what you saw, but yes, that's the same size. We are using, we were just actually talking about it, there, these two, we have hardy siding, so they, they look, they're wood, wood hardy siding versus the metal. It does have metal roofs.
Good.
Yeah. Right, yeah, yeah, so it's a little more in keeping with the cottages.
Yes, yes.
Can you speak to the, can you speak to the hardy plank? The hardy plank is more of a fire-resistant material, correct?
It is, yeah, both the, the hardy plank and the, the metal siding are all rated, fire-rated. So the, and those are, you know, state-licensed, state-permitted. So, so we did decide to go with the, the hardy wood-style siding for these, because it matches the other cottages a little bit more in keeping. And they're much smaller, this, this will allow us to save a couple more oak trees, there's a lot of oak trees, I'm not sure if you walked, all, all of you got to walk over there, but there's some, you know, they used to be really small trees, they've grown, and this will allow us to save a few more of those. And there's a, there's one really large oak tree, you kind of have that green outline here, but one in particular was right in this courtyard, it's kind of where that X, green X is. And with this duplex, I, I don't think that tree would have made it with this formally-approved design.
Oh, right, yeah, I see what you're saying.
What's the path that you're bringing the Samara units in via?
Great question. We are trying to figure that out, I just had their engineering team there.
Because I was wondering what the fire room, we were there, and that doesn't seem really possible.
No, no, no.
But now that I see this, I'm like, oh, I guess you could come in maybe through Oak, but...
I actually think we'll end up, I mean, I'm waiting for them to weigh in on it, they did look at Oak, but I think it actually might be from Mallory Way.
Uh huh, uh huh. But so that's not...
It's kind of where we have all the stuff staged in the fenced area.
Right.
I think that's gonna be the best bet, actually, John, you and I looked at the one that they craned in.
Yeah.
In Santa Barbara.
Yeah.
And they had that...
Similar...
They had the guy there that ran the crane.
Okay.
He was at the site, and so he kind of took me aside and was like, yeah, that's where we're gonna set up.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see.
That's not really driving this, because you, I guess you'd be coming from a different position in the site.
Yeah, we gotta figure out how to get them in there, and they do have kind of like a roller system, I'll call it.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah.
So they could drop it and then roll it in, but, you know, we'll see. I mean, they're, they're experts at that.
And there's houses that are surrounding the, the...
Yeah, there's houses all along the, the north end into the, I'm sorry, the west side of the red area, and also to the west side of the, of this duplex is kind of pop out.
Yeah, there's a house like right there, I believe.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what about, I, I'm assuming this is north, right above where it hits Mallory Way? Is there, are there houses there, like how are you gonna get your ingress point?
So this, this section here is vacant other than oak trees, big oak trees.
Right.
To, if you take this line here, and you go kind of straight up, there's a house just to the west of that, north on this thing, but...
Yeah, and that's like a, there's like a wall.
So we, we would be craning in basically from down this area over the trees.
Oh, got it.
Over the trees.
Over the trees.
Over the trees.
The one in Santa Barbara, they went over trees and a house.
Yeah, wow.
I mean, they're using the big...
Yeah, the big guy.
The big guy, yeah, big, big red crane, very large red crane. It's, yeah, it's a little weird watching it.
They have good insurance.
I, I hope so. We'll get into that at some point, yeah.
And the, on, when I did walk the side, I know the path from Oak Street is, it's pretty much built out, right? I mean, it's, it's dirt, but it's, it's there. I mean, it looks like that you guys did the repairs to the, the creek, so you're, there's, there's a clear pathway.
The channel, yes, we, yeah, they did a bunch of tractor work when they did the, the channel upgrade work.
And, and all of these, the houses that are there now, these are all existing structures, right? All the ones that are in the blue and the green?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, okay.
Yeah, only the red, there's nothing in the red zone at present.
Right, got it.
Does anyone know why the phasing was this way to begin with?
Good question, I don't know.
I, yeah, I...
I'll, I'll admit, it is a little unusual for the, the small number of units, but given the consideration of, of the bungalows themselves, I think there was a lot of concern from the community in regards to just the modifications. Easing that in over time with this phasing, I think is kind of, I've done a lot of reading up, but it's hard, the institutional knowledge isn't there anymore, so it's just understanding what you're seeing from the reports. It seems like that was the, the biggest concern was the impact over time versus the impact immediate. So the phasing piece, how, it also helps Jeff and his team work through the undergrounding piece, and then, as a part of the settlement, it also helps those, those tenants that are currently occupying to find other shelter, yeah. The first two units that we're talking about here in the yellow, those first two, those two units had been vacant since before 2019, right?
Yeah, we vacated them in 2018.
And the two units above the five-car garage, those are brand-new, that was a part of the settlement.
Right.
What would be the downside of approving a change in the phasing? Are there any?
Let's, let's hear from the community on what the downside is. Because I, to me, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, of a process versus the impact to the people who are actually living there, so. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a downside from the phasing standpoint. If you, if you push Phase 4 to be either aligned to or to jump the line where 2 ends up coming after Phase 4, I don't see an issue with that, because right now, we're talking about an area that, that is vacant.
Okay, it, it all sounds very logical, but I just wondered if there were...
But I would like to hear from the community on this.
I had one last...
But we have no cards from the community, is that correct?
There's at least one there, yes?
Yeah, we got one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got one question.
If, if you're wanting to speak on this item, there's green cards at the entry to the door here, please fill them out.
Just one question before I'm, I'm ready to turn it over to the public. Page 4 of the admin report, last sentence of the second to last paragraph. "In return, the developer has been granted city-owned land abiding Mallory Way." Just confirming, this is for the Mallory Way project, that is a city-granted land, this isn't additional city-granted land specifically for the bungalows.
Correct. The reason why that's in there is it's the, it's the bungalow settlement agreement, so it's call, it's all-encompassing, I, I kind of borrowed the language from what we had previously written. So it was, I was trying not to, to change that language and staying consistent, so you're right, it does cover that, but it's, that's for Mallory Way.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I guess my...
And to clarify on that point, it hasn't been officially approved by the city, that's something that's coming at the council meeting for that project, there's surplus land act noticing and, and things that we have to do, and council has to formalize that decision before that can happen.
Yeah, just confirming, thank you. With the, so with this plan, these would be done and could be occupied while these are under construction, so the access will have people kind of going through where the, you know, where future, I mean, it's renovation, so maybe it's a little lighter, but I guess my question is, does this phasing take that into account, meaning like, right now, there's gonna be potentially roadwork happening here, which is like the access to the new Samara units, which is...
The area you're speaking to is the area in blue, correct?
Yeah, the area in blue, sorry, where you enter on Oak, which seems to be the access point for this unit.
Jeff, can you speak to that? The access would be mainly off of Oak or mainly off of Aliso for the construction purposes?
If, if we move forward with Phase 4, the two Samara units, what we're planning to do is have temp access off the fire line. There's just too much work to be done in Phase 3 around that final, would, would in essence be the final section.
Got it, okay.
And Phase 2, two of the units are already vacant. One of the, one of the occupants, Scott, is still in a unit, we're waiting to see if he qualifies for one of the ADU units.
Right.
The city's reviewing that.
Confused, so the main access is gonna be at the top, it's gonna be the...
Temporarily, until, until Phase 3, we're into that, which, honestly, it's, it's taken a while. Phase 1 is taking us probably twice as long as we thought, mainly because of utility issues, and we, we've still got some offsite improvements that we're working through.
A lot of rocks in the ground, too.
Yeah, that's true.
But they, they use them really well.
Yeah, so they're, you know, you just, there's unknowns you run into, so...
I guess my question is, the Samara units, are they gonna be occupied during the temporary access, or are they gonna not be occupied?
We'd like to try and occupy them, but we'll see.
Are they...
The main thing for us initially is, is, you know, how does this lay out?
Right.
How do we get it installed?
Right.
Really, you know, it's, it's a tough spot there, and Mallory Way is kind of similar.
Right.
So we're trying to figure out, like, how's this gonna lay out with these, you know, prefabs?
But if those prefabs are there, and they have folks occupying, where are those folks gonna park? Where are they gonna go in and out of?
For the, for the, for the temporary, until we get the Oak Street side done, we have the fire line, fire lane, I should say, sorry, and we would, we would use that.
But they can't drive cars on that, can they?
Yeah, they can.
You can?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're driving equipment down it, and...
Oh.
Yeah.
I know, I haven't seen it, okay.
Yeah, we had to do a ton of work with the storm channel upgrades, so yeah, we had, we had lots of good stuff.
Interesting.
And so it's a goal to start with Phase 2, move all the utilities up, and then work on Phase 4 and getting the undergrounding utilities, and drop the Samara units? Or is it to drop the Samara units and then work back through Phase 2?
No, we need to do all the underground first, all that needs to be done first. And, and they have to make the units, too, you know, that, that's gonna, that's about a four-month process.
Sure, thank you.
So we would hopefully get all that done over time.
Is there, is, do we get a, is there a plan, I mean, does it matter how the Samara units are laid out on this? I mean, I guess not as far as how phasing goes, but...
Well, it does, it does, okay, so there's a couple of things regarding the Samara units. The Samara units were part of a director's exemption approval. Not only that, but this is a part of a track map, so those areas that you're seeing in the red that have that gray, those areas are the boundaries by which each of those lots are allowed to...
It's got that on the screen over there, so we can see the map, we can't see it.
The map's not over there?
No, it hasn't been the whole time.
No, it hasn't been the whole time. Thank you.
Oh, is it now?
It is now, but this is the first time it's been up there that we can follow.
Okay, so thank you. So, sorry, the question was, the Samara units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
We're just looking at an old layout, so.
Correct, correct. I did, I did that intentionally because this is the original approval from, from oh eight, oh nine.
And that's what we're determining based on.
Correct. But the layout that you're seeing there is really the layout by which each of those two, um, tract units are, that's the boundaries by which they can operate. There's, it's not beyond that.
Sure, sure.
The Samara units that you're look, that, um, were part of the director's exemption are much smaller. I mean, we're talking, you said seventeen hundred square feet initially, and these Samaras are right around six hundred, so it's considerably smaller.
Yeah.
And there's parking next to the Samaras or in that section?
Yeah, in that area. That's the future.
That's future parking though, there's no parking there now.
No.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions for Jeff?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Um, I got two speaker cards, Anita.
Good evening. Uh, if you don't know, I live in the cottages among the flowers, and I actually live off the Oak Street entrance. So, okay, I'm gonna go for it here. This project has been out of compliance in many ways. Um, you know, of the conditions of approval, and the community has had to play oversight on this project in an attempt to bring it into compliance. Tree protection, lots of problems there, uh, you know, contract with Chumash Monitor, the crew even had to be sent home one day to bring them in compliance with that. Um, dust mitigation, it's still a problem. Dust mitigation is still a huge problem. It's flying and it's coming into my backyard. I asked umpteen times and it does not get corrected. Um, the creek, that was illegally covered. You guys know that, that they should have had permits from the state of California. That was our creek. It belongs to we, the people, the community, illegally covered without any idea of what was actually supposed to be done there. Um, so, you know, contrary, you know, continuing problems. Uh, no consultations with a qualified historic preservation professional. That's in the conditions of approval for the cottages among the flowers. They were actually only supposed to be doing renovations, leave two walls completely torn down. Um, you know, where is this professional historian that's supposed to be making sure these renovations meet standards? And that also applies to this new duplex that's supposed to go on the hill. That is supposed to be historically aligned with the cottages among the flowers. These should be historic on the national, state, city level. That was given up. The city gave that up in this settlement agreement, and so that's why they were supposed to have professional historian. That's why this duplex is supposed to be in compliance with historic nature of the cottages among the flowers. You know, this hasn't been good behavior and it's gonna be rewarded here tonight if you just go along with what's being proposed. So this will magnify the chaos and disruptions to our lives of those of us who live in the cottages. And believe me, I pay premium rent while living in the middle of a construction zone. The creek work was awful, right in my backyard, and it was illegal, I will remind you. Our water has been shut off numerous times because the water is all connected. It's not separated out in separate meters. Um, if two phases are allowed to happen at the same time, it's just gonna be awful. Um, and, you know, the plans show that, as you know, the, the entrance for the new cottage is supposed to be on Oak Street. Well, you know that fire road that you're talking about using, there are property owners that own that and they currently park there and they block it. And it's their right to do that. It's their property. So I don't know how you're gonna tell them, hey, you can't do that. We're gonna use this road to access this new AD, this new duplex that's been put on the hill there. Um, you know, if phase four is finished before phase two, as we've been discussing, the unlucky residents in this, uh, little duplex that doesn't match historically are gonna be right in the middle of access points for trucks, cause that's the way they're coming now. That's, that's the truck travel way, and they pile dirt, you know, it's, it's the construction junkyard in that fence and this new duplex is gonna be right there in there with it, you know, and also the place where the dust mitigation is not happening. One tenant will be displaced, displaced by this. Now, it's interesting that, um, it has been said that he's gonna qualify for the ADU. So if you move him out and move him into that ADU, you're gonna have all of phase two empty. You know, right now, only three cottages are occupied. One of them is in phase two and two of them are in phase three. So they're almost empty at this point, and if you move the guy into the ADU, which he should get by right of the settlement agreement, uh, even his is gonna be open, and so they're all gonna be empty. Um, you know, if, uh, you allow two and four to happen concurrently, that is gonna be a mess. You know, and it's already been a mess. Um, so, you know, as I said, we're gonna be in the middle of this, and this prefab Japanese duplex was never a part of the cottages. You know, some of them have no windows, some of them very small windows. Maybe this one is different, but they are not historically aligned with cottages that are, that are, have been approved. The city's count, the city council staff report for July twelfth, twenty twenty-two stipulates on page one sixteen, number seven, it references the new cottages duplex saying it will match the existing cottages, the existing ones. Not the two that were torn down and rebuilt that were only supposed to be revent, renovated. This is not a renovation project. This is tear down and rebuild project. Um, in spite of what all of the documentation says is supposed to being done there.
Um, Anita, um, you're three minutes.
You gonna let me go on? I'm the only one speaking, representing the cottages.
I got one more speaker card.
You gonna cut me off?
I mean, I, it's been, it's been a while.
Okay, well, one more thing I'm gonna tell you.
Just right, yeah.
Is that this is not in alignment with the settlement agreement either, which says that the permits, that the permits for the cottages are set to go. The plans don't need any changes, and it says that all of the parties, that that settlement agreement is binding and final. But it says in there, there's no need for changes to any of the plans, so it looks like this might break the settlement agreement also.
Thank you, Anita. Um, next is Fran? Fran, I'm sorry. I couldn't read it. It's my fault.
Um, hello, I'm Fran or Fran. Um, I live at the, at the Mallory Way, just above the cottages. And I don't have very many points, I don't have any points actually, cause I'm so exhausted by this whole situation. Um, and I feel it's almost a moot point for any of us to even say anything, cause we're just the little people against the behemoth of the Becker Group. So it doesn't really matter what our opinions are, it feels like. I'm against moving to phase four. That's all I gotta say. Try to protect the residents, try to protect them. That's your job besides doing whatever.
Tell them that we are not rent protected at the cottages like the staff report says. We're not rent protected. It says it at the.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I'm, I'm so exhausted by all this. All I wanna say is I'm against moving to phase four. I feel like a little teeny person against this whole big thing, and that really are, my opinion doesn't really matter.
Fran, why, why are you objecting to phase four?
Because I just feel that, isn't, isn't what's happening enough for everybody? Like, there was an agreement, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. Why, why does it have to, why does it have to move? Everyone is so stressed out. People at the cottages, people at Mallory Way, we're all like walking around on eggshells, like waiting. So just go by the plan. Go by the plan that was agreed upon, whenever it was. We've been at this for so many years. It feels unstoppable, so just go by the plan. Give us a breath. Let us just see it as it happens. We're already dealing with the destruction of the creek. We're dealing with destruction of the cottages amongst the flowers, which were historical and beautiful. And the last vestige of Old Ojai that everyone just allowed to be torn down. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, one more speaker card. Larry?
Two.
No, he's on, he's on item two. You're on item two, Bill. Is this one you wanted to talk about? This is item one.
I don't have, I have trouble with numbers.
Okay, did you want to speak on this one? Oh, you wanna speak on it, okay. Well, we, we, either one, either one, yeah, go ahead, Bill. You can, you had your card in first.
He's still writing.
Larry Steingold. Um, when I read it, it makes sense to just move forward and get it all done as fast as possible and as simple as possible. And then you listen to what Anita wrote out a whole list of things. And are there any showstoppers? Is she right? Are any of those correct? Which ones are incorrect? Go down the list, cause you owe it to follow the rules and regulations and permits and whatever was agreed upon. And if somebody's deviating from the plan without permission or skimming or whatever, whatever the reasons is, cause it happens in development. It just, you know, you just do things, right? And it's like, well, okay, but are any of them the showstoppers? Don't know. Not my, I'm not that familiar, all right? But if they were to go to a hotel, I'm just, you know, if they were all sent to El Roblar for two weeks and got it all done and they came back, would they be happier? I'm just saying, I mean, if this is, if there's nothing here to stop the deal and it's gonna cause a big mess and they're with the dust and the water and the whole constr, cause you're in the middle of a construction project. So is it easier and cheap and less expensive to move them out for a period of time? And pay for their upkeep and pay for wherever they are. I'm not trying to spend this money. But if that makes it easier and there's less aggravation, just get it done. Unless there's something here that's going to stop the project and derail it or do something that is gonna cause a ripple in the force, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Larry. All right, Mr. Meyer, you are up.
Hi, what number am I talking about?
You were talking about the.
This one or two?
Number one.
Okay. My interest and concern is that the folks involved, the stakeholders involved can get together or have been brought together to discuss the issues that they have. From a tenant point of view, from a contractor point of view, from a planning department point of view, from a city. And I don't think that's happened. Doesn't sound like it's happened. So I'm interested in seeing that a problem solving process has occurred, should occur, or will occur, that results having the stakeholders express their concerns, their problems, their needs, their misunderstandings, their need to know more from the standpoint of the tenants and the contractor and the city. So I would like to see more of a consensus process here. And I would hope that might, it might, some exist in this way, that there would be a list of over the months or the years of issues that have been brought to the attention of the city, the planning department, code enforcement, one, three, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, whatever. And it would express the statement of the concernee, more likely the tenant, the situation that the city sees it as, as to what the structure is, and then the response from the contractor here. And all three parts look together. So if there are trees that are not being cared for according to the tenant, the city says they should be, cause it's right here, and the contractor says, we did, we had arborist. And what was the result? Well, that column, there's nothing in that column, but there should be something in that column. That's what I would like to see out of this process, so that the stakeholders come together. There's a big list of the concerns, which ones have been brought to the city, which ones have been looked at by code enforcement, what were the results, the findings, who was it reported to, and what happened to it? Cause it seems to me that we have a box and there's just a bunch of stuff in it, and none of it seems to match up. That's the way I see it. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
I have more time.
All right, uh, Sherry, is there anybody online?
Yes.
Okay.
Teal Rowe.
Oh, Teal, you are, you are all set.
Great, thanks. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate, um, being able to be heard. I'm a hundred percent with all that Anita said, except for one of her points is that there, the residents are the only ones, uh, are affected. I think that it, the entire city of Ojai is affected. Two of you up there aren't aware of maybe what had happened with the settlement. So I highly, highly recommend going back to the settlement agreement and following it bullet point by bullet point based on what I just heard from Anita. Also, I'd like to say to the director that, you know, there's plenty of institutional knowledge floating around this town, this valley. Many of us have lived here our entire lives and we would be happy, more than happy to help you with any information that you know. The other thing is based on that, I do know that this is, and it's on the record from before everything went down, this canyon is a wind river that feeds town. It feeds our souls of Ojai. And the creek that's been plowed over and all the work that's been done on it is a flood zone that watches us clean when it's time. So the people that end up living, buying, renting, whatever the final thing happened, turns out to be. I think that that needs to be remembered, disclosed, and I, for you two and the two people, um, on the board there, on the planning commission there, just wanted you to know that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teal. All right, Sherry, anybody else?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll close public comment. Um, open it up for discussion.
Um, I'd like to start by asking Lucas, um, about the creek. It was my understanding that the state department was involved with the fish and wild, whatever.
Fisher model.
Fish and wildlife.
Right.
So could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so to Anita's point, some of the points that she has raised are correct, but there are, there are some clarification to, to some of those points. The, the creek piece, um, in the, in the environmental document, it identifies it not as a creek, not as a channel, but as a hand dug, um, basically storm drain. And that was identified through CEQA and then, uh, went through the entire process from a legal standpoint. So that's the record that we use moving forward. I mean, I understand that there's, there's certainly very deep and rooted feelings towards, towards other aspects, but that, those are the facts. I'm not coming forward bringing you opinion on some of this stuff. These are facts. So that's, that's the first piece. However, the thought was, is, is that there was not gonna be a requirement for them to go through, um, fish and wildlife. We still reached out to them, asked very clarifying questions, um, provided the notification. They came on site and then identified that, no, this in fact is a channel that does need to, to have and go through their permitting process. So that was, that was new information for me, and that was a lessons learned for me. So now we're going through and working with, with Jeff to go through that process. Right? So that stopped any work that's going forward for the, for the channel. It's being referred to as a drainage ditch or a channel at this point. Um, not a blue line stream. I know there was conversations about that early on. It's not a blue line stream.
Was, was it covered out of compliance?
Yeah, so really, if, if we're talking about, yes, thank you. If we're talking about compliance, um, there should have been a permit process that went forward first. Instead of coming forward after the fact with, um, fish and wildlife. So fish and wildlife's basically said, yeah, you've gotta go through our process and get an agreement moving forward. Um, that'll, basically, it's a maintenance agreement is the way in which they've kind of described it to us moving forward.
Has that been done?
Part of the process moving forward.
Has that been done?
So we've, not the city, but the, um, but the applicant, uh, the Becker Group has, has, uh, reached out and has started that process. So we're waiting to hear back from them in terms of what the timing is for that and the, all the information that's required there.
What are the penalties for being out of compliance and?
They didn't identify any penalties at this point. I think what they're wanting is an agreement, um, at this point. They didn't identify any penalties at this point. I think what they're wanting is an agreement at this point.
Fish and wildlife?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it only out of compliance with fish and wildlife, or are there other?
Well, okay, so that's the first piece. I know there have been...
Related to the channel, that's the only one.
Related to the channel. So let's shift gears to some other aspects, to the conditions of approval. In the very beginning, it was identified that there were some, there was some work being done that wasn't consistent with the conditions of approval. So what, what I basically ended up doing is bringing in Jan Skow. And he is a well-known reputable arborist. Now, obviously, Jeff and his team also have an arborist on site. However, in situations like this, it really did kind of make sense to have somebody who was, I'm not going to be out there, I don't know what I'm looking for, but I, I know in having those conversations with a reputable licensed arborist, he'll be able to talk to me, or she will be able to talk to me about what needs to be done. And that's been happening. That's been happening for the last several months.
So there is an arborist on site regularly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, anytime that there's work being done, and if it's not, he makes that very well-known through his reports that he provides at an infrequent basis.
So Jan Skow is working for the city?
Yes, representing the city, going out and making sure that, that the work that's being done is consistent with the conditions of approval, as it relates to the trees.
Okay.
And what are the penalties for not complying with the conditions of approval, trees or otherwise?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different aspects that we could go through. One would be just citing them on site and then, and going through that. So the first citation, with co-compliance, the first citation is $50, and then it goes to $100, and then it goes to $250, basically. And then it's $250 thereafter.
So this is a, it's a code compliance process, usually handled through a complaint.
Yeah, the, the only, the only thing that concerns me, I know there was conversations about it going through co-compliance. When it goes through that channel, it becomes a matter of kind of protecting those that provided the complaint. Here, it's a matter of compliance with the conditions of approval. And we're looking at compliance and, and ensuring that those, those conditions that, that the applicant and the developer in this case agree to is, is sticking to that.
So that's your office that is more or less responsible?
Absolutely.
For making sure that the development agreement is being followed.
Yeah, that's, so you're talking about the settlement agreement.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's a separate piece, but also married within what we're talking about here.
So when, when we say one, you know, avenue is citations, are there other penalties for being not in compliance with the settlement agreement?
Yeah, so for instance, if, and this happens even with co-compliance cases, if, if we have someone that is out of compliance, and they're not willing to have conversations or come to the table, then we move and take more drastic measures. And those measures can be basically taking it for a public hearing and, and removing any of the, any of the approvals that may have gone forward for lack of, of working with the city and remaining compliant with the conditions of approval. Here, as soon as, as soon as Jeff's team realized, in the conversations that we had, that there was some of these conditions that were out of compliance, they immediately were like, how do we get into compliance? Let's make sure that we're doing the things that are necessary. And at that point, I made the determination that I needed somebody that I trusted with, as an arborist, to make sure, because a lot of these conditions are very technical from a tree standpoint. I mean, the work that's being done on site to preserve and protect a number of these mature trees requires someone to be on site regularly.
Right.
So.
So are they currently in compliance today?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They are in compliance. Now, you also have residents that are living in a construction zone. That is not an easy situation, right? So of course, they have eyes and ears on everything that's going on on a daily basis. The dust mitigation, absolutely. In the beginning, it was, it was an issue. And they know that they're supposed to be watering twice a day. If they aren't, then we need to be made aware of that. If we're not made aware of it, then I don't know whether or not they're in compliance or out of compliance.
And that's done through a complaint?
In addition to that, I have a building inspector out there on a regular basis.
Right.
So.
But I guess, I guess my point is, if dust was a reoccurring issue, those should be complaints filed to the city from the residents.
Right.
And if they, if there aren't complaints, you guys have no idea what's going on.
And I would say this, I know the residents that had, that are living there and the residents that are in Mallory Way have made us aware of it early on. But not recently.
Right.
And so then, in that case, we look at it as, oh, we're moving towards compliant or remaining in compliance. If it's not...
Right.
We need to be made aware of that, because at, at the end of the day, these conditions of approval are, are the reason why this project's moving forward.
Got it. Another quick question, the historic nature of the new Samo, Samara, Samara? I can't even...
Samara?
So the...
Samara units.
The requirement was for the, for each of these units to be documented, and each of these units were documented.
Yes.
And that was all done in basically 2018.
Okay.
Before all the stuff that went forward with the project stopping, and then litigation, and then coming to the settlement agreement. So they were, they were gearing up for the construction piece. And not only that, but the plans that, that went forward do include these four phases.
Yeah.
In addition to that, the plans also have a condition, condition number 27, that requires it to come back to this body when phase four is being considered, which is the reason why this is coming forward, if phase four is being considered. Now, granted, it's jumping ahead, but it's still being considered, the reason why it's coming forward.
I have just one more question on oversight. Yeah, there's an arborist that is representing the city. You also mentioned someone else who's routinely...
Oh, yeah, a building inspector, who's out there ensuring that the construction's being done in compliance with building.
Is the city overseeing this process in any other ways?
Oh, a third, so we also have a grading engineer that's out in an infrequent basis to do inspections. Now, granted, they weren't out there for the initial creek restoration, but they're out there now.
I have a question for the applicant, if you don't mind coming back up.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's say we approve phase, phases two and four to be done concurrently. Is that going to speed up the timeline for finishing the Cottage Among the Flowers project? Will that delay the project? What's the timeline if we approve this versus going under the original 1, 2, 3, 4 phase timeline?
I would assume it would delay it a little bit, because we'd have to wait to do some utility extensions.
Sorry, which way would delay?
If we were just going to go ahead and do phase two, then move to phase three, then to phase four.
But if we approve concurrently with, moving forward with phases two and four, it may speed up the timeline?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, that's our expectation.
What, what's the difference between doing two and four concurrently versus just pulling in and doing four first to you? What?
It's primarily the utility installations underground.
You, you need...
Part of phase four, because otherwise, we're going to, when we get to phase four, we would then tie in...
Tear up.
Yeah, we'd have to come, kind of come back and tear up some areas. So that's, that's really was the motivation for doing it, so we're, you know, not tearing up twice. And this site is an old site, right? So we're running, when we did the storm drain upgrades, which by the way, was permitted by the city, I want to make sure everybody knows that, we had city inspectors out there, we had public works out there. It's been, you know, 10 years, 12 years in the making, so it wasn't, it was all part of the phase one portion of this. But we're, if we, if we wait to do phase four, the main thing is utilities underground. We would be then creating more of a mess, dust, all those good things, because we'd be trenching.
Does it make a difference to you whether you would get the concurrent or moving phase four up? It sounds like two different plans are under consideration, and I want to know if, how it impacts you if we do one versus the other.
I mean, we'd like to do both of them together. We don't really want to start phase two until we get phase one totally complete, which is maybe a month and a half away. It's pretty close. And also, we want to relocate the tenant that's in the one unit that's still there, Scott, assuming he qualifies. So we're pretty close to starting phase, getting ready to start phase two. But it's fine if we do phase four. I mean, we're going to prolong and get our job done. We're not stopping. We are not stopping. So. And we've got a lot to accomplish. We've got three other sites, and Mallory Way is the last one, which is, you know, a very large project. And this was going to, kind of give us a, a little bit of an example of what to do with Mallory, how to tackle that one, because that's, that's a difficult site, just as this is.
I'm hearing that you need phase four to get the utilities dealt with.
That's the main thing, because it's...
And the fireland.
Yeah, right. I mean, there's a lot involved in doing the utilities, you know, you're trenching down substantially, a couple of feet in the ground, and you're, you're making a mess.
Some of the concerns obviously seem to be about just the activity on site, which we can imagine is a thing.
It's a tough one.
So it seems like to do them concurrently would, you know, make that potentially worse. I wonder if, if the idea, or if it's more important to do phase four, you know, would we consider something that maybe allowed for just the utility work of phase two happening to get to phase four, doing phase four, and then coming back and doing phase two?
So doing phase four first, and then doing phase two?
Well, because that's one of the options, right, is phase four first, or phase two and phase four concurrently? But to do it first, is that, is that...
Or you think, or you're...
Is that right?
You can do the utility stub and...
Do utilities and...
Not necessarily the structures, putting the structures in.
Not those buildings?
Right, right. Yeah, that would be fine, too.
Because that would give you time to do the fittings, to see if they work.
Right, yeah.
See if the Samara buildings...
Yeah, if we could, if we could, I mean, that would be fine. That would be fine. The, the utilities is probably the critical part of it.
Yeah.
Right.
Seems like to do it concurrently is going to be the larger disturbance for the neighbors and for existing tenants, and even if, even the tenant who's there who moves to phase one, he's still living in a construction.
Yeah, he's right next door.
Yeah, right.
There's no getting around that.
No.
It's, it's close proximity.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And in four, I mean, obviously, you guys are going to do the, the smaller units. So it's not going to require as much time, I would assume, as phase two, right?
Correct, yeah, that's for sure. And, and it's built off-site, so you don't have all the construction noise from, you know, framing and...
Right.
Fin, finish work and rock work and all the things that are involved in it.
And are you guys going to be paving that, that fire road, or is that going to remain like dirt?
It does get pavers, which is, if you walk the side, it gets some of those same pavers.
Okay.
That are on the drive, the current drive.
That'll get rid of a lot of the dust.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, that has matting and base, road base and other goodies on there. But yeah, it, it's a dust wall.
So if you do the utilities plus four, you can help eliminate some of the dusts, help with some of the, the construction at all at the same time happening, stagger it out a little bit.
Yeah.
Does the, does the path of, sorry, the pavers, do they go all the way past where the parking is at?
Yeah, it, it, I think on one of those schematics, it kind of shows, as I remember. So there's some sections that's, that chose the pavers.
We just have two little drawings here, so anyways.
It's, it's similar to the drive area for phase one.
I'm just assuming it goes to here. Those are the parkings.
Yeah, there's some diagonal parking, I think, on the one, on the north end.
Yeah. Yeah, just, as you say, the project's moving forward. It seems like, how can we do it in the most, you know, sensitive way possible?
Yeah, that's, that's our goal.
Less disturbance is the better. And I'm assuming the arborist for the phase four, is the arborist already seen the site, he's already signed off?
Yeah, we have Bill Mallett as our arborist on the site.
On the site, okay. All right, cool.
And we've, you know, we've tried to save some trees that actually were slated to be removed. We're, definitely, that was one of the reasons to try the Samara units also, because it was, it was going to remove a bunch more oak trees. So we're saving some more of those on that end.
Got it. Okay.
So phase four is basically the utility work, that's a big part of it. And then it's a bunch of, some amount of kind of grading and paving and prep. And then it's the foundation work, and then bringing the Samara units.
Yeah, most of that grading has actually been done, but there will be some for where the units will go, the two Samara units.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But most of that has already been done with, with part of the storm drain work.
Yeah. So I mean, an advantage I can see is that the Samara units go in easier than a typical building. If you're working, you can sort of be done with the adjacent property disturb, or more far away from the adjacent property disturbances potentially sooner than later.
Yeah, hopefully. Okay.
You ready?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
What are we...
We're still in discussion. Maybe we, I mean, I like, I, go ahead.
No, I, I really like what you proposed.
Okay.
I think that takes into consideration what I was trying to get at, and helps alleviate, you know, a lot of the disturbance for the existing residents.
It's not, we're not approving two concurrent...
Right.
But for with...
Four than two.
Whatever work needs to happen for the utility work only.
One, two.
And then back to two and three.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Moving four up is basically, making four next.
Before we, before we make a motion, I did want to ask Lucas a question around the Chumash monitor. Has that been done? Is that all?
Yes. So anytime there's any sort of trenching, that still is required. Chumash has been out there before. It was out there in 2018. It was out there again before the work was started for phase one. So that has been an ongoing situation. The thought was, is everything that took place in 2018 was good. However, in, in talking with the applicant, they've agreed to have them out on an infrequent basis is when work's being done.
Okay, all right.
Before we make the motion, I just wanted to speak to the public real quick.
Yeah.
For the, the residence cottage among the flowers. I think you're the eyes and the ears for the city on the ground. The city is going to, you know, continue to believe that the applicant is in compliance with the settlement agreement unless they hear something.
Right.
And so, you know, no, now's not the time.
It's exhausting.
And, and what I'm trying to do is let you know that it's up to you to be able to bring it to the city's attention if something is out of compliance, and so.
Yeah, I would say...
The city has responsibility here to...
Okay, okay. I, I agree.
Don't let this happen.
Yeah, let's, let's not have feedback from the public, but...
My apologies for that. I just feel like it's important for the public to know what their roles and responsibilities are here as we continue to move forward with this project.
No, 100%. I think we do need to have the official, there needs to be an official complaint process that's followed if there are issues. And that needs to just continue as is, and if we haven't got any complaints, then the city assumes things are moving along.
There was, there was a comment made by...
All right, let's, can we not talk, please?
Mr. Miley.
Complaints at you right now.
Just, please.
There was a...
You're being disruptive, and we can ask you to leave if this continues.
That's what you need to do.
Okay, then, can you leave? Could you leave? If you can't, if you can't quiet down and not disrupt the meeting, then you have to leave.
I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Bill.
Is it possible to reopen a public hearing on issues that are very contentious?
Why?
I, I don't know what the benefit would be.
I, I don't see a benefit either. The, the commission is prepared to make a motion. Commissioner Graham was speaking to the public, so they were aware of the complaint process. And then now we have disorder, so I would recommend that the hearing stays closed. Within your discretion, you, you may open it, but public comment has been concluded.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's a need for that. Thank you, though, Bill.
I did want to just offer up, Mr. Miley brought up an interesting point, which is kind of what we've done with the planning commission in past, when we know that there, or anticipate that there's going to be a lot of contention from the community. And we've done it in a two-part process where we take in those, that public input, and then from that, respond to it either in the staff report, or create an FAQ, or frequently asked questions. Hearing the concerns that were raised by the community, I can certainly add to the already existing FAQ and post it on the website, as, as we've done in the past. So...
Thank you.
I would offer that up, and you can make that a part of your motion as well. That was something we'll continue to do.
Sure.
You'll send it to us, right?
It'll be on the website, and I can certainly send it to you individually, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to check the website every day. Just saying.
All right.
All right, so let's make a motion to move forward with phase four.
Then?
Then phase two.
And add.
And then phase three.
Frequently.
Utility work?
Yeah. That's part of, that's part of.
That's part of phase four.
Phase four, right, yeah.
And his frequently asked.
Oh, and to include the frequently asked questions.
To add on to the frequently, yes.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Sherry?
Chesley?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Okay, time to move on. Will we take a break? Yeah, take a quick five-minute break. And we'll move on to the BAB.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Mike, yes, thank you. Okay, so you remember when I, thank you, Bill. You remember when I said the last meeting, I said, hey, stay tuned to the city council meeting, there's gonna be a surprise, surprise? It's this. So at the last city council meeting, at the end of the meeting, um, it was late, and the council had said, hey, staff, can you come up with a quick, I'm like, this isn't quick. I mean, I'm identifying three options here, but it's not, you're impacting quite a bit here. It's a long history. It needs to be a, a long discussion. And so then the offer was to bring this forward, um, to the planning commission. Because one of the options in here is for the planning commission to take over responsibilities that, that BAB has been responsible for, for a number of years. So, um, really what tonight is, a discussion, um, if you feel led to provide comments or questions that need to come back for a subsequent meeting, that can certainly be done. I'll just give kind of the brief on this. Really, the, the BAB exists as a part of building code requirements, which is Title IX. And within that, it, um, offers an opportunity for those that, that want to appeal or even provide comments as it relates to building code standards. Now, you know this, the community knows this, I know this. Those items typically do not come before this body. However, this body is a state-required government body, meaning that unlike other commissions, which are by leisure, this is required, like a council is required. Um, the BAB, well, a decision appeal process is also required. Um, the BAB was, has been serving for a number of years as that resource, but also as a resource to provide information and guidance, um, over the years on a number of different building-related matters. Um, so the options tonight for discussion, and obviously if you have questions for me that I can't answer, I can always come back, um, with responses, is option one would be to delegate authority to city council. City council would then become what the BAB has been doing. So any appeals, decisions that are building-related would go to city council. Option two is the fun one. Not to say that the city council isn't fun, but it would then fall on the shoulders of the planning commission, meaning you would be the body that would also be providing guidance and regulation as it relates to, um, Title IX. Right now, you're focused on Title X, which is zoning. That would then expand the role and responsibilities that you would have as a body. A number of times, there have been conversations before this body where the determination was made, and for obvious reasons, this isn't our role, not our responsibility. This is really a Title IX thing. Point made. If this body takes that over, that, that, that is no longer a moot point. That is a point by which this body would then be, um, would take responsibility for. Now, maybe asking the question, well, geez, would the community development director be responsible for providing that expertise? As much as I like to think that I would, I am not the expert from when it comes to building-related matters. Um, in the event that situations would come up that would require Title IX, I would obviously be bringing in the building official. And that individual would be your, uh, representative to ask those very technical questions as it relates to building-related matters. The third option is to just maintain status quo. Right now, what that means is the BAB itself hasn't met in, I wanna say, almost three years. I think it's been since 2022. Now, they don't have regular standing meetings like this body does, like historic preservation, like arts commission, like.
They used to.
Parks and Rec. They do. Instead, they meet at leisure as items come up. But ha- do you?
I was on the building.
I know I'm giving kind of a presentation.
We met regularly.
This is more of a discussion. So it, they really haven't met in, I wanna say, since 2022. So.
Wow.
Anyway, it's up for discussion. There are, in, in, in this pack up for discussion, uh, not this, is advantages and disadvantages. Obviously, those are, are kind of opinion-based versus factually-based.
Why have they not met in three years?
There hasn't been an appeal.
So there's two reasons why, why BAB meets. One is appeals. So for instance, if the building, um, official makes a determination and a contractor doesn't agree with it, they can then file an appeal and that appeal would be before the BAB. In addition to that, there have been fire hardening opportunities. When, um, code cycles come up, like for instance, there's a new code cycle that's coming up, that'll be coming before the city council in November. Um, I'm currently working with the building official on getting that, um, before the body. The BAB typically takes and provides, um, comments and recommendations that then get forwarded to the city council. So those are really the two, the two, um, areas that they have been providing, um, input and certainly guidance and determinations. Have they been in the last three years providing determinations and guidance on fire hardening? Not in the last three years, no.
Previous to that, they, they did, uh, provide guidance on, uh, particularly on roof, on, um, fire hardening about roofs and, um, uh, smoke detectors. And that's the sort of thing that we discussed. We did meet regularly in the last, hmm, maybe.
Do you say we? Why do you say we? Just give some clarification.
I was on the bill, I was on the BAB.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That was my first question.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, there have, in the last several years, there, I think, have only been two appeals. My question is, why is this coming up?
Ah, excellent question.
Council asked for it.
Yes, that was, it was a request of council back in June.
Did it come to council as an issue or does somebody on?
It came up as a end of the meeting request. From motion.
But is there like a critical issue? Like that was my question as well, is what's the critical issue here?
That's how it got generated. It was a request of a council member that they can make at the end of the meeting. They're entitled to do that. And then their colleagues either second the motion to move the idea forward, or it dies for lack of a second.
Did that council member give a reason for this?
That I don't know. I don't believe so.
And June, I don't think the, I don't think there was a reason brought forward. I can't, I can't think of a specific reason aside from.
Is that city council member still on council?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense, yeah.
I believe, I believe it was council member.
Is it a secret?
No, it's in the meeting. I believe council member Whitman was the one that made the motion.
Yeah, it'd be great to get some context there as to why, before we make like a decision. Yeah.
I don't know if that information is gonna be available to you.
But it, but it does help guide me to say like,
Sure.
hey, status quo, there's no reason for us to assume those responsibilities if there's not a need.
Well, I think you can also make that recommendation back to council, right? Like if, if you don't have enough information or you don't feel comfortable, like, hey, we think status quo because we don't see a reason for the, the change at this time.
Do we, do we have a fully comprised BAB at the moment?
So the members that are on BAB are currently all expired. So there would have to be a really evaluation.
They'd have to start over.
Correct.
Well.
How many people are currently on the BAB?
Five, I mean.
Yeah, there's five.
Five positions.
But they're all expired.
They are all expired.
Oh, okay. I mean.
That's what happens if someone appeals right now.
So in the event of an appeal and we're not able to re, reignite the BAB, it would get, get kicked to city council.
Yeah.
So this could have come up when they were looking at all of the, the different committees.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, during the council goals? Yeah, that's, it's possible that the idea was, actually, it may have been generated during.
Cause if you have a, if you have a body that's, that's expired with five people and they haven't met in three years, that begs the question.
Well, having people just like as- assigned to a committee that there's no need to meet, right?
Yeah.
Can we give a recommendation, though, that they should fill these positions and that they should meet quarterly or on a periodic basis, just to make sure that there's a knowledge transfer, that they're educated people who can take Title IX issues when they arise?
I think that they would need to do more than just a knowledge transfer, right? If, if, if council required them at least to meet once a quarter, it would be to advise, right, in speaking on the second arm of what they're capable of. They can provide feedback and recommendations on proposed code and changes to, to their title. So they would need to do something beyond just sit and receive presentations, cause that, I wouldn't recommend that because it takes staff time and resources that are already being shuffled around to accommodate the commissions that we do have.
But I think my concern is there being like a knowledge gap and then us trying to put people on this who don't have the know- I mean, this is one of the disadvantages of like, you know, transferring at city council or planning commission is no knowledge of this. Um, but I love your idea of, hey, meet quarterly, work on, you know, Title IX revisions, the same way that we have discussed Title X revisions. And otherwise, it's gonna fall to us for the city council. City council's too busy. Do we have the capacity to take this over?
Well, and I think because there's been a gap in time, regardless of which body took it on, I imagine that any appeal that came forward would come for, with education for whoever that was. So staff would take the time of like, consistent with what we do here. Here are the rules that are before you today. These are the things that are in your purview that you need to consider. Here are the issues. And staff would frame that out and, and talk the commission through that idea. And I think we could add additional things, right, of like maybe releasing the agenda to them sooner or, um, with more time before the meeting so that there's time to ask questions, clarifying questions behind the scenes of like how things work, things like that.
I'm sorry for dominating the discussion. I know this is something that I'm, I'm mindful of. Um, setting staff's time aside, I respect staff's time, because do amazing job. Um, I think I'm more worried about less qualified people being able to, you know, join the planning commission at a later date and making sure that we actually are like building talent and building volunteers throughout different parts of like our boards in the city and allowing for like that natural process for people to move up, move in with that existing knowledge or transfer over and take on a different position so that they're, we're not left with just one person for planning commission or an empty seat.
Yeah, my, I think my initial feeling was kind of related to what you're saying where it's a small town, having a separate committee allows more people to be involved in that small town. So you're taking away five potential involvement positions, just cause it hasn't been that active right now. Do you used to be structured differently? Was it overseen? Do you used to be structured differently? Was it overseen in different, was it a part of a different committee before?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
No? It was always separate?
It's, it's possible. It's because of the change of the, the characters who were on council, and, characters is the wrong word, the humans. The people on council and the commission changed, so, you know, if you have maybe a chair who's less interested in meeting unless we need to meet, or creating opportunities to discuss, right, it's possible for these things to die. But in looking at the requirements to one of the points that you made, that you just have to be, I don't even see the residency requirement.
I mean, the ordinance itself has been in place since 2013, so.
Yeah, you, you have to-
I'm not, I'm not familiar with what the process was.
You have to be residents of the city, and you have to become knowledgeable about the building code. There's no requirement, likely because of the population of Ojai, that you are knowledgeable when you come in, right? Like some of the other commissions.
And I think that's great. It's like such a great entry-level way to get involved in, in the city. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would like to get additional context of why. I'm just, I'm confused.
We're, we're into discussion, and we haven't had our-
Oh, yeah, we, well, we can, we can open it up for public comment, sure, and then we can, then we can move in. Any other questions for staff? Yeah. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay, we'll open it up then. Larry? You knew I was going to call on you.
Good evening. I applied for the BAB. Okay, and that was three years ago.
Oh, wow.
And nothing but crickets, okay, so, and that goes along with park and rec and planning and everything else. So that whole entire process just belongs in the toilet, just to be said. Everybody should be interviewed. The idea of that you really should not be reaffirming your own decisions by becoming the BAB,
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is a big mistake, and the fact that making the City Council politically now being run by real estate building code amateurs because that's what they are in that field, okay, because you guys, the people, excuse me, the BAB, Ben, Lucas, and are educated, planning, codes, the, the whole thing. You've got the experience to look forward. What does this mean? What does that mean? What happens? That's not their forte. Do they really want to be the arbiters of a real estate thing? Do they really want to be the final arbiters of, look, look what happened with the Mallory. Okay? I mean, look what happens with this stuff. Do they really want to get involved? Why? This should, I mean, in Rhode Island, they, it goes to Superior Court. You do an appeal, Superior Court has a pathway, and they, and they get it done. That, and then everybody just backs away. The buyer, the seller, the brokers, everybody, they just go, toss the appeal away, and that's what the BAB would be. And then if somebody wants to go to court or something else, that's a whole nother deal. But don't make yourself the arbiters or the final determiners of your own decisions. Are you going to say, oh, we, 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 we made this decision, now the applicant is appli, is appealing it? And you're going to backtrack off your opinion and agree with him? That's like, that makes no sense. I mean, you either made a decision, and you support your decision, or you, or you didn't, whatever, but the point is you can't now become the judge and jury of your own opinion.
Our, our decisions get appealed to the, to the City Council.
Right, but, but that's fine, but this is another layer. You don't even have to deal with it. You made your decision, you did your work, now it goes off to the BAB.
I, I challenge that a little bit. We are Title X, so we're dealing with the planning of the building.
It's different.
But not the building itself.
Right, but the idea is the BAB should be separate and not a part of-
I understand, I get it.
You guys, and, and let it go to the city final, but look, have another set of educated eyes look on it and say, oh, he's right, or he should have looked at this, or they should have looked at that, and go back and sit down and make a deal. And get it done, which is what Lucas has been-
Are you still interested in sitting on the BAB?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
But that was, but, anyway.
Well, I'm asking now.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Good to know.
All right, but that's, but that was the whole point.
Okay, thank you, Larry. All right, Mr. Miley, you are up.
Oh, I'm just staring.
Always working, I love it.
He works.
Okay.
Late into the night.
As Lucas said, it was going to be on the agenda for the, the August 26th City Council, and I had prepared my comments, but I didn't get to give them, so. Hello. This is what I was going to say. Wow, what a demand for service. There is no demand. The last time they met was November 9th, 2022. And then I said, I was going to say, I don't remember why this was raised for a concept review, no reason had been given. Now we know. We know that there was a council member, at least one, who said at the end, I'd like to have this brought up and put on the agenda. But we don't know why. And that would be helpful. So, the representative appointed to, appointed to pass boards, because I attended the meetings, were knowledgeable and seemed not to resent their obligation to the study and participation for what the board was responsible for. And I would like to add, I added this, because they have not met, it must be that the Planning Department and the commission are doing their jobs very well and fairly. I would think that if they were doing them unfairly, you'd be getting a lot of appeals. That's what's holding up. And the people that the Planning Department and commission are working with, and they have come to present, are accepting what you decide and how you decided, and they go ahead and follow up on it, and they don't have to appeal it. That's pretty exciting for the path road that this city has been on, because we've had a few other things, okay. Maybe it would be helpful to have the board meet new appointments or get the old ones, because my understanding is that unless you're replaced, you have to, you get to perform until you're replaced, even though you have entered your term, okay? So invite them to come together, it's an official meeting, to discuss their role, their value, their participation, and their future. And then I would like to, just to underline what Mr. Graham said, give them some jobs beyond dealing with an appeal to make Title IX, if it can be, made better, more fair, more understandable, or whatever, that's the job that they would do. So, I don't think assigning it to the City Council is all a good job. They are policymakers, and they're political, they're politicians. What do they know about any of this besides? Also, I don't like, I, I, I want them to continue. I want them to be reactivated. I want them to be citizens. I don't want them to be politicians or officials working for the city. I support the current structure. The appeals board want them to continue and offer them new opportunities to make our city even better than they have in the past. I think what we have now is really good, and the fact that there hasn't been any appeals, bad lawsuit, speaks well to what they have done and what we should continue with the structure in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Uh, Sherri, do we have any, anybody online?
Nope.
Nope?
Oh, excuse me, Steve Quilisi, yes, sorry, he just popped.
Oh, you do have somebody online.
Hold on.
Oh, okay, great stuff. Oh, yeah, Mr. Quilisi. Yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
How are you?
We're good. How are you?
Uh, doing fine. Uh, would like to give you a little context here, because like Commissioner Murphy, I served on the BAB before serving on the Planning Commission. I was on the BAB 2015-16 before joining the Planning Commission. The BAB has, first of all, it's established by state law, the function is. And it is unique among commissions in the city in that its decisions, which are twofold. One, hearing appeals of city building official decisions, and two, making other changes that are requested by the City Council. Those decisions are not appealable to the City Council. Whereas everything the Planning Commission does is appealable to the City Council. In the year that I was on, we did some changes to Title IX, requested, I believe, by the council, and we heard one or two appeals, and those appeals were final. If, if the Planning Commission were to take on the function of the BAB, which is certainly legal as far as I know, you would have two kinds of decisions that you make as, as the body you are. As the Planning Commission, your decisions are appealable. As the BAB function, that's the Housing Appeals Board and various other things, it's all stated in the code. Those decisions would not be appealable. They would be final. Uh, in the same way, if the BAB function were to revert to the Planning, to the City Council, those decisions would not be appealed, because there's no other level other than litigation to settle those disputes. My preference would be, my recommendation to you would be to recommend to the City Council to leave the structure as it is. To have the BAB as a separate function, as a separate body, as an, as a body that makes unappealable decisions by state law. And adding Title IX to the requirement that you all be familiar with Title X is a big load, I can tell you. So my recommendation is, don't, don't, don't go kick that sleeping dog. Let it stay where it is. The fact, and as Bill Miley said, the fact that the BAB doesn't meet very often is because it isn't necessary to meet very often. And I think from when I was there, from when Commissioner Murphy was there, it's doing a good job. It's doing what it needs to do, and it's not ruffling a lot of feathers. So, that's my recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. All right, Sherri, anybody else?
Nope.
All right, we'll close public comment and move to discussion.
If I may add, Steve helped me remember, a new law got passed that is going to limit the ability of the city to adopt a building code, except for very, very limited instances, that's different from the state mandated code.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, the advisory part, though that is a great idea, they will have, fire-hardening is one space that will be available, but there is a very narrow scope, I believe, for the next eight years, of what changes can be made to the building code. So, that will limit them, um-
So they won't be changing Title IX too much?
Yeah.
One, one thing, again, I'm trying to remember, it's, it's been a long time. But I believe that the decisions of the BAB are appealable to a court.
Yeah.
Not, not to anybody in the city, so, just to say.
And for, I believe Mr. Miley brought it up, staff legally can't be on the BAB.
Right.
Right, it has to be someone other than the enforcement agency.
Right.
Well, are we just giving our advice or recommendation back to council? Is that the plan here?
Yeah, you're reviewing the information here.
I don't think we're voting on anything.
Discussing. If you have questions that I, either myself or, or the city attorney can't answer, then we can bring those back, continue the matter, or if you're, you know, if you feel so set and moved by, by what you've heard tonight, then-
Um, one, a, a question for-
It's meant to be a discussion tonight, really, not necessarily looking for a decision.
The fiscal impact, option one, uh, which would be status quo, maintains the current budget allocation for the Building Appeals Board. What kind of budget? I don't remember a budget.
So it's not necessarily budget for those individuals, it's really the building official operating and, and recognizing to the capacity of them being there and present at each of those meetings.
Got it.
Okay, we did, we did have a building official-
Through the contract that we have with, yes.
Okay.
So I just want to call out, um, Attachment A, page two, first paragraph D, just say, the members of the Building Appeals Board shall be appointed for terms of four years and shall hold office until their successors have been appointed and qualified. So in the meantime, if there is, you know, an appeal, it sounds like we will bring that existing board together again to hear that, rather than it just going up to City Council.
So long as they are interested in serving and willing, yes.
And qualified. They don't, like, they don't live-
Thank you for the, yeah, thank you for the clarification. That, that's a good point. It, I did say that if not, it would go to City Council, but D seems to, it's D. D seems to be pretty clear on that. The other interesting thing is-
If, if we couldn't get a quorum, I believe that we would likely have counsel.
Okay, so we would fall onto that, so we would, we would do our due diligence to reach out to those individuals and make sure that there's a quorum.
It, it, I would like, I agree with Mr. Quilisi. I would like to see the BAB reconstituted, um, new members brought in and available for cases. I don't think this should go to the City Council. They've got, their plate is overflowing. I'm not even sure it really belongs here. I think it belongs to a citizen group, the BAB.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're, I, I agree. I agree with Steve. I think that, you know, because their decisions are not appealable, and they have a specialized, narrow focus of expertise, I think it's important to have a body that just specializes in that, versus putting it on our shoulders. It gets a little confusing, I think, because, you know, we're serving, it'd be serving too many things, and I don't think it's appropriate for City Council. So I would like to hear, I mean, my recommendation would be to keep it. Um, if this does come back, I would like to hear why we were doing this in the first place. But I do have a question on Attachment A, D. Yeah, when, when their term expires, they're just, what, do we appoint new people to this board? I mean, I'm confused how, we do, but we haven't appointed anybody.
Works just like this.
Yeah, most, most of the commission, I believe all of the commissions have similar language that you serve until your successor is appointed. Or you're reappointed.
I think John's question is why hasn't there been a new appointment?
Yeah.
Why has it just been sitting vacant for three years?
Yeah.
That's Lucas.
I don't have an answer for that, to be fair. It, it's not something that, that is handled through Community Development. It's typically handled through the city clerk's office, um, in terms of the interview, the, the applications that come in for that.
The city clerk is Steve.
Yes.
So Steve would be the one to-
And, and Weston, I believe the deputy is the one that manages that process.
Okay, right.
So is, can we advise that, that we-
Steve, that he needs to look at these bills?
This is a very small town.
That could very well be the recommendation moving forward. You know, it's interesting, in the three years, I do find it interesting that there hasn't been a peep. I don't know, I don't want to sit here and toot our horn that Community Development's doing this amazing job. I just think we've found ways to find solutions that don't require us to, to elevate it to the BAB. I would agree that in previous years before I was here, in 15, 16, 17, there was a lot of interesting turmoil going on here. Um, anybody want to watch a meeting from in between 2014 to 2018? It was fireworks here in certain instances because of the, kind of the turnstile approach that was happening with planning and building, so. And the community was not happy with it. I mean, I saw that front and center. I mean, with letters that were written and presentation that came forward, it was not a, it was not a happy time, for sure, so.
Well, I'm with you about not just recommending back to the City Council that we keep the, you know, BAB, but also that we reconstitute its members and actually put out, you know, notices, hey, we're interviewing for- put out, you know, notices, hey, we're interviewing for these five roles and actually conduct those interviews, reconstitute the the, I guess, board.
Yeah.
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 I'm with you.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You don't wanna take, uh, you're not, you're not interested in taking on the responsibility of the BAB, huh?
And.
Understood, understood. It's a, it's a large responsibility. Title, Title IX is a lot. I mean.
Hey, Title IX is complicated.
Reaching out to the building official and inspector to get clarification on things.
Ti- Title IX is complicated stuff and it really, the BAB really needs some, some people that that are very familiar with the building business, construction in general. So.
My, can I just offer a, some insight into this? I I was curious to see if this body was gonna say, yes, let's take that on. Then my thought was, how do we do that?
Yeah.
Because at that point, it does feel like there needs to be, because I'm not the professional from that standpoint.
It's almost like you'd have to have two separate meetings or something.
Right. You're wearing more than one hat from that standpoint.
If you have a BAB, they also have a time limit, the time from when a complaint is made until it has to be heard. So it would really um jumble your schedule a little bit.
Well, to be, to be fair, the appeals that for Title X are are similar in terms of, I'd be, I would say the the timeframe is much shorter here. It's a forty-five day period versus a sixty day period um for planning commission for appeals. So. It is, is a tighter timeline and I'll just tell you, sixty days, we need all of that to get prepared. So forty-five is even, I mean, you're taking a lot of time.
The other thing is when you hear a case, the attorneys come and they lay it out for you. They do explain everything. And and so you're sitting there, you know, like the judge.
Right. So.
So.
All right, okay. Well, I think we got a recommendation. Obviously, we don't need to vote, correct?
No, but it sounds, it sounds to me like what I'm gonna take forward to to city council is status quo.
Yeah.
Yep.
And.
Status quo, yes.
Stat- activate.
Activate the status quo.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna say that if you're not gonna vote, that if you disagree with anything that was proposed, you should object to it, because that's what's moving forward.
Okay.
It seems like you're all in agreement, so, okay.
All right, all right.
Very good.
Proactive status quo. Very nice. All right. Moving on, moving on, moving on. What do we got? In information, yeah, future agenda items.
Okay. So there are no items that we're identifying for the seventeenth of September. So staff is actually recommending that that meeting be canceled. But the October first meeting.
Let's do it.
There are, there are two items at least that we're seeing that that will be ready. So.
Okay.
Certainly be having, having a meeting October first, but.
That September seventeenth date is when I was gonna be out of town and I'm happy I don't have to rush home, so, great.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, did we need to vote on that cancellation?
Yes.
All right. Uh, anybody wanna make a motion?
I will motion to cancel the September seventeenth planning commission meeting.
Second.
All right, Sherri, can we get a vote?
Chisley?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. All right, perfect. Good deal. Uh, director's report, back to you, Lucas.
Well, I look forward to taking forward the recommendation or the the information that was provided by the planning commission tonight. It was an interesting exercise. I mean, we did have a late meeting um at the most recent city council meeting. Um, so I was curious to see what this body was going to have to say about the three options, so I appreciate that. Um, aside from that, nothing else to report at this point. There are a number of interesting projects that are getting ready to move forward. Unfortunately, we are still working with one of the projects. Um, Cabrillo, which is off of Bryant Street, to try to figure out the financing for that. So I've been working with them um kind of offhand, trying to sort through that. Uh, it's been, it's been a little bit messy. It's the, it's the tipping point between um developers that have the money and cash in hand versus ones that've gotta go ask for the money. Um, it's an interesting dynamic, so. I'm learning about it as a developer.
Working with the state?
Yes, yes. But the way in which they frame, so it can't be, this isn't a deliberation, but I will answer that question, just the, the information there is Cabrillo is structuring their um their units in a way in which it's um, uh, I get it. It's, what's the word I'm looking for? That it's, it sweetens the pot for the state to look at it and say, oh, this is one that rises to the surface. Unfortunately, there are a number of projects that are rising to the surface and either they're not the right mix or they're not the right number. Not necessarily location, because location is irrelevant at this point. It's, it has a lot to do with that.
But I thought the state wanted to build more housing.
They do. There are a number, I know, I know what you're saying, yes. So not, not a deliberation, not a deliberation. This is just a report out, just to let you know there are things happening behind the scenes to try to get these to move forward and I'm working with them to to find some, some solutions, so.
I'd hear that.
Within the framework of what was approved.
Awesome. All right. Uh, moving on, commission member reports, anything? Nothing? Okay. And finally, our city council liaison, Kim, you are up. Da da da.
I don't have much to say, but I will report that, um, I don't know when I was out, if you guys talked about it, but on the fifth, we have two interviews for the um open seat and also on the tenth. So we're hoping that we will be able to choose the right fit and you guys can just keep moving.
Rock and roll.
Yes, and that's about it. So thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Okay. All right, guys, uh, let's see, what time is it? Seven fifty-six, officially adjourned. Good stuff.